Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Samantha Sims. I am the Designating Hearing Officer for these proceedings. The role of the Hearing Officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not participate in any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the proposed issuance of air permits to Pilgrim's Pride Corporation for the construction of a facility at 3900 Still Station Road, Gadsden, Alabama 35906. The department would also like to thank Mayor Sherman Geiton and the city of Gadsden for allowing us to use the facility for this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit renewal. In addition to oral testimony as described in the notice for this hearing, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate your taking the time to make them known to us. On December 22nd, 2020, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advance notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the office of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as the department's website. The hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making a permitting decision and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied the requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations as granted to ADEM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the Hearing Officer or the department's staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to the comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit renewal. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the Hearing Officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop responses to comments for the proposed permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video and will be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now, let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's air division. Then, any elected officials or their representative who may have registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered during the pre-registration offered online or by phone, and then those that registered onsite at this hearing. I will now recognize Ms. Haley Crumpton to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division.
Good evening. My name is Haley Crumpton and I'm with the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. I'm here to present a statement on behalf of the department concerning the proposed issuance of air permit numbers 307-0051-X001 and 307-0051-X002 to Pilgrim's Pride Corporation. There are many issues of community concern which arise from development of a new industry in an area. Examples include property values, noise, traffic, and proximity to schools. The Alabama legislature has created laws which have given governmental entities at the state level specific authority to regulate new industry and has given other authorities to local entities such as county and city governing bodies. ADEM can only consider those issues it has been given authority to consider when making a decision on permits such as the ones being considered here tonight. Those issues fall completely into one narrow area. Does ADEM's review of the permit application show that the facility, if constructed, could meet all of ADEM's air quality regulations? If the answer is yes, permits must be issued. The many other legitimate issues which arise from a new industry can be addressed only through local land use planning such as citywide zoning and ordinances. In addition, ADEM had no role in the process by which this specific site was chosen for this proposed development. ADEM became involved only after the site was chosen and after an air quality permit application was received. Pilgrim's Pride Corporation is proposing to construct new sources of air pollution to be located at a greenfield site in Gadsden, Alabama. The proposed new sources would include three gas-fired boilers and animal feed ingredient operations to be controlled by an air washer, a regenerative thermal oxidizer, and three pack bed scrubbers. Among these sources is equipment that would be subject to new source performance standards for air emissions. These regulations were developed by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. These regulations would limit emissions resulting from the animal feed ingredient operations and the combustion of fuels from industrial boilers and the regenerative thermal oxidizer. The control devices that have been proposed for installation at this facility would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements. Based upon our review of the air permit application for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of two air permits, each developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Pilgrim's Pride Corporation with the conditions of the proposed air permits will not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. The preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I will now recognize Mark Glover to present a statement on behalf of Pilgrim's Pride Corporation.
I'm Mark Glover. I'm with the Pet Food Ingredient Division of Pilgrim's Pride. I'm pleased to be in Gadsden this evening for the Alabama Department of Environmental Management's public hearing. Pilgrim's Pride would like to offer our thanks to ADEM for holding this hearing in great lengths and win to, in order to ensure proper precautions are in place while allowing the community the opportunity to offer public comment. We understand there is some opposition to this proposed plan. Tonight, we want to directly address all Etowah County and City of Gadsden residents. We understand there is some opposition. For Pilgrim's proposed pet food ingredient plant will be built with the most advanced available technology which will promote sustainability. Simply put, the high-paying jobs and economic development this plant will create will not come at the expense of Etowah County's natural resources or quality of life. For example, our thermal oxidizer odor-eliminating technology is state-of-the-art. The system ensures that all processed vapors and odors are collected and destroyed, meaning that odor will not leave the property. Building will be kept at negative pressure, which means that if a door to the plant is open, odor cannot escape outward into the community. It's important to understand that our odor abatement system is closely monitored and data is regularly reported to the state to ensure compliance. The air quality and odor elimination technology is proven and extremely effective while it's the most advanced available technology is being used in many places around the world in the United States. For example, similar odor-eliminating technology is currently being used at a recently built pet food ingredient plant in Ward, South Carolina. A recent Birmingham, Alabama TV news report featuring a woman who lives a half mile from that modern plant showed her saying she cannot smell anything at the plant. On our site, our on-site water treatment plant will be the best in Etowah County. All rainwater that falls on our services on-site will be collected and treated separately from processed water. The storm water following the treatment is then piped directly to the local water treatment plant. Processed water undergoes rigorous cleaning on-site. Our cleaning process uses redundant equipment to ensure our high operational standards are met. An on-site lab will test the water with city lab verification to ensure compliance and transparency. Let me be very clear, no water from our plant site, not storm water nor processed water, will be discharged into local waterways. All trucks and trailers delivering to the plant will be covered and/or sealed. The trucks will unload completely inside the plant doors closed. All trucks will be cleaned completely inside before they leave the plant, ensuring the cleanliness of Etowah County roads and City of Gadsden. And to be clear, the water used to clean the trucks is collected, cleaned, and treated before being piped directly to the local water treatment plant. Pilgrim's wants to be a part of Gadsden's growth. As you know, the poultry industry is critical to the state's and county's economic success. Poultry accounts for $15 billion impact on Alabama's economy. Locally, poultry is sponsored for more than 1,700 jobs in Etowah County and over $128 million in production. With city and state approval, this proposed plant will allow the poultry industry to continue to expand and will help get Gadsden growing. Our entry level of careers will start at 1640-hour plus benefits with an average wage across all positions at the plant over $20 per hour plus benefits. At Pilgrim's, our vision is to become the best and most respected company in our industry, creating the opportunity of a better future for our team members. We're not perfect, but the men and women of Pilgrim's believe in this vision and strive to achieve it every day. I would not be here today if we did not believe we could help create a better future for Gadsden, of the men and women who live and work here. We look forward to an ongoing dialogue with the community to share the facts and dispel the blatant misinformation being spread by some from outside Gadsden. Thank you.
First, I recognize Andrew Jones, State Senator.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is State Senator Andrew Jones and I represent Etowah, Cherokee, and Southern DeKalb Counties in the Alabama State Senate. I want to thank you all and Director LaFleur for agreeing to hold this hearing tonight. Director LaFleur has always been quick to answer when I have called and I appreciate the efforts that he makes to work with those of us who are in the state legislature. Tonight, I come before you representing over 8,400 concerned citizens who have organized through social media and grassroots efforts in opposition to the Pilgrim's Pride rendering facility. These citizens have peacefully protested at city council meetings, made phone calls, written letters, shared research, put out signs, donated their own resources, and even more in a united effort to keep this facility from coming to Etowah County. It is unfortunate that we have a number of what I call tone-deaf local politicians who have refused over and over again to listen to their constituents. The people of Etowah County do not want this plant anywhere in our county. And since these politicians will not heed the calls of their citizens, tonight we must turn to you for help in protecting our schools, our businesses, churches, and communities. Now, I'll be the first to admit tonight that I'm simply coming to you as an elected official, not as an expert in permits or environmental regulations. But I have done my fair share of research into Pilgrim's Pride and its parent company, JBS, and what I have found would, in my mind, certainly disqualify Pilgrim's Pride for getting a permit for any variance. Pilgrim's has spoken repeatedly to this community about being a "good neighbor." However, according to Good Jobs First, a national policy research center, JBS, the parent company of Pilgrim's, has not been living up to that goal, with 184 violations and nearly $35 million in fines since 2000. These violations include environmental, employment, and safety-related offenses. But they had quite an unsuccessful autumn. The above totals that I just referenced, the $35 million in fines and the 184 violations since 2000, were not updated since September 28th. And they looked like a drop in the bucket compared to what Reuters reported on October 14th that Pilgrim's Pride had pled guilty and will pay a $110.5 million fine for price fixing. Additionally, JBS, the parent company, was fined $26.9 million, and J&amp;F Investimentos, the parent company of JBS itself, so that the grandparent, if you will, of Pilgrim's, must pay $256 million for violating the U.S. Foreign Corrupt Practices Act. So let me get back to the "good neighbor" thing. A 2017 report from the Environmental Integrity Project said that three of the top 10 polluting slaughterhouses in the U.S. belong to JBS, Pilgrim's parent. The list goes on. In 2017, there was a settlement with Florida over water quality indicating that Pilgrim's wastewater was toxic. There were civil penalties for odor in this past February in Chattanooga. And there was a fine in July for the death of an Alabama worker, courtesy of AL.com, that information. The truth is that Pilgrim's Pride is not any neighbor that I would want to be around, and the people of Etowah County were very quick to pick up on that. I myself have authored sweeping legislation which, if passed, will protect Etowah County from this proposed rendering plant. This bill applies strictly to those companies and/or parent companies that have been fined more than $50 million by the federal government since the year 2000. It is my belief that Etowah County should not be a dumping ground for repeat violators of federal law. Etowah County should have our children, churches, and businesses suffer to provide profit for bad actor corporations. But you know, we don't want to simply rely on legislation or even bank on a change of heart from the city officials in Gadsden. Tonight, you all have the power to deny this permit. You have the ability to recognize that a repeat offender should not be given yet another chance to offend. A repeat violator means that a company has shown poor judgment time and time again. And if our local city officials in Gadsden do not have the spine to hold such a repeat violator to account, then I hope that you would all consider doing what they do not have the political courage to do and deny Pilgrim's Pride this permit. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Would you step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the office that you hold? Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded.
Thank you. My name is Craig Lipscomb. I am State Representative for District 30. District 30 encompasses the southern part of Etowah County and the northern part of St. Clair County. The city of Rainbow City is completely within my district, and so, as you can imagine, many people have come to me on many occasions recently with great concern as to this rendering facility. And I appreciate my senator being in here previously and giving you so many facts and figures regarding it because I don't have that today. What I would like to do is to speak to you more candidly from the heart. My given profession is an architect, and as an architect, it is my sole responsibility to protect the health and the safety and the welfare of the general population in everything that I do, everything that I construct. I carry that into my political career as well. I find it painfully difficult to not work diligently to protect the health and the safety and the welfare of those people who I serve in District 30. I cannot think of anything more unconscionable than permitting someone to bring in a facility for the sake of benefiting themselves only to hurt others who are adjacent to them. And that's exactly the situation that we find ourselves in today, whereas in one entity has essentially said, "We're going to do something for our benefit," even though it is hurting people in a different location directly adjacent to it. Those people who are being hurt have no representation from the first. They have no one to understand their problems, no one who they can hold accountable for their actions. And so, I'm coming to you today to very respectfully and humbly request that you deny the permit to this corporation who has, on so many occasions, proven to be such a bad player to the communities that they've been within. We know this is a fact. We presented that evidence, and we know that you will see that evidence as well. So, I think that it's important that we look to the legislation that the Senator Jones has presented, as well as some that I'll be presenting, which the intent of my Good Neighbor bill that I'll be presenting is to ensure that there's a dialogue between municipalities and/or entities who are adjacent to one another when something like this comes to play, especially an animal rendering facility. And that's all we're asking for is a dialogue, because that certainly has not happened here. There was no dialogue. No one came to express their concern to Rainbow City or Southside or any of the other communities that I represent and tell them what their intentions were. It just simply was happenstance that people within my community came to find out what was about to happen here. And it was only by happenstance that they were able to even have this discussion with you today to ask you to do what we're asking you to do and to not validate this project as a whole. And so, I hope that you will hear me and understand that I represent a great number of people, and my sole purpose standing before you today is to represent them in the regards of their health and their safety and their welfare, and that of their children and their grandchildren, because they're going to be in close proximity of this facility. And I thank you for your time. I thank you for hearing me. Good evening.
If you would please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the office that you hold, please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded.
Thank you. My name is Joe Taylor. I'm the mayor of Rainbow City. I represent about 10,000 people in Rainbow City, 25.1 square miles on the Coosa River. As far as the rendering plant, and I know we're all here for that, I want to speak to the three things that, as the mayor of Rainbow City, I'm here to and in charge, in charge with protecting. Those three things are the children that we educate inside Rainbow City, the community, and the quality of life of our citizenry, and then finally, commerce. I've said all along since this first came out, I think I was the first elected official to come out in total opposition to this rendering plant, and it was based on those three things. It was based on about 3,500 to 4,000 students that are within close proximity to that rendering plant in dealing with not only the smell, which we, you know, we've obviously have been told that can be cleaned up, but the particulate matter, which I know that ADEM is very, very concerned with, also with the streams and the water, you know, that our very existence is to protect those children. Our second thing is to protect that quality of life, and those two things run hand in hand. And then the last thing is our commerce. And the commerce within Rainbow City, we've already seen a negative effect that's being caused by this rendering plant or the chance that it might come close to our town. We're directly across the street, so we border this. I mean, we're separated by the line down the center of the road. I have to probably just back up just a little bit and give you some understanding that I'm not against growth, but I've already seen growth, you know, be stammered by this rendering plant or the proposition of it. I'm not against poultry. I'm not against any of those things. I'm against the fact that Pilgrim's Pride came in, asked for permits, did all of this, you know, in a very, at the very least, quiet way. And then, they said to us that this is good for us, that this is state-of-the-art. Well, in saying that something's state-of-the-art that has never been built prior to this, there's no plant that they can take us to that would be an identical plant to this. There's no way that they can prove their technology without us being able to say, "Show us that technology." I mean, it's really a put-up type of proposition. So, in our case, I think that the greatest problem that I see is that overall, this is an experiment at best. And with ADEM and what you all do, which is to manage our environment, you don't deal with experiments. We deal with sure bets. And in the case of this technology and this so-called state-of-the-art, it's at best an experiment. If we believe that this is just going to work, that we can believe that every engineer never makes any mistake, that there's not going to be any bad discharge, that they're not going to be rendering on the playground that's within just a couple of miles, as a matter of fact, within a mile and a half of this place, I think we're fooling ourselves. And I think we're being very unfair to the permitting process and to the management of our environment. Now, I can, I could go on and on in talking about what's wrong with this. I want to speak to what's right about our community. And our community, we're a very small landmass county, the smallest landmass county in the state of Alabama. We have a population density that is ninth, 10th, or 11th, and that's arguable on which page you get on on Google. We have a lot of people in a small area. I'm not saying we don't need rendering plants. I know that we do. That's a part of the world. It can't go in Etowah County, and because of the three Cs, because of our children, because of our community, and because of our commerce. If we take care of the first two, the third will take care of itself. I believe that. I appreciate your time, and I'm pleading to the desires of a group that all you're here to do is to manage and take care of our environment. I know that to be the truth. I've been a contractor for a large utility for years and years and watched how we fall inside those regulations, and in doing so, we always serve the people that we serve. And I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
If you don't mind stepping up to the microphone, clearly restate your name in the office that you hold. Speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Jamison Jenkins. I am on the Rainbow City Council in Place Number Four. First, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us tonight. We greatly appreciate it. I apologize for the hat. I came straight from work. I promise you would rather me keep it on. But I just want to echo a lot of the things that our mayor said. I'll start out with our commerce. It is mind-blowing to me the impact that this has had, not on existing commerce only, but on potential future commerce for the city of Rainbow City. The amount of phone calls that we as a City Council have received from businesses who had a true desire to come to Rainbow City that are now second-guessing themselves, excited about a City Council who, outside of one member, is almost brand-new, the work that we have put in with people who we had truly interested in coming to our city and now, before any of this, has decided they're scared to come. And I'm honestly just mind-blown by the number of people that have called us. And that's not even existing commerce. That's just, that's future growth that we're trying to prevent. And I just want to talk about unity too. There's been a lot of comments publicly and everything that you see discusses the word "division" about this plant. And I truly believe there is no division. I think it's very clear that Etowah County, Rainbow City, and every city within our county is very much united in the stance against this plant. There is no division at all. I think that's clear. I think if you do any amount of research that that's undeniable. And another point that I want to make is, and I truly believe that the citizens that have joined against this are educated. And so I don't want you to take this as me saying that they're not, but I think it speaks volumes when you have governments, city councils, and counties alike who join together in resolutions against this plant. We even have a county that is outside of us that this plant is not in that has made a resolution against this plant. Not a municipality with inside the county, not a state entity, a county that is completely separated from Etowah County that thinks that this is important enough for them as a county commission to go out and make a resolution against. And I think that speaks volumes. Governments don't go out looking at what other communities are doing to pass resolutions in opposition to things that would potentially grow the community. That doesn't happen. And so I think looking at that speaks huge volumes. And then the last point I want to make is, I'm representing Rainbow City as a council member, but in my official capacity, I work at an elementary school every day. And especially with COVID, but all the time, I know how important it is for children to be outside and to be able to enjoy being outside. I see the way and have seen the way that not being able to do that in the same way is detrimental to their mental health. I've seen it every day at work. And point blank, in the story, we're releasing particulate matter into the air a mile away line of sight from where schools are. And I think that's the biggest point to this to me is children. I see it every day and even the slightest potential to affect their ability to be able to enjoy recreation while they're at school, I think it's a no-brainer. And that's the biggest point to me is children. I think point blank. I mean, like Joe said, no matter what, we cannot prove this technology. It's never been used. They can't show us a plant that's like it. And at the end of the day, we're releasing particulate matter into the air a mile from our schools. And so in my capacity at work, that's just something that's close to my heart. And with this being close to an elementary school, a middle school, and a private school, I just, I think it's a no-brainer in that capacity. So, but I thank you for your time.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name in the office that you hold. Make sure you speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Prince and I am a Rainbow City Council member, Place Three, and also a mayor pro tem of Rainbow City. And I would like to thank you very much for your time and the opportunity just to, for allowing us to voice our opinions and some things that we have a lot of concerns with. I want to begin by saying, in no way am I against or we against Gadsden growing and getting new growth in the area. Our concern is mainly what it's going to do to our environment and the location where this plant has been proposed. As Jamison, my fellow council member, just mentioned, this is just a mile or so from three schools. I know I've been to some poultry operations in my life and in my business, as a matter of fact, but this type plant is just not right for this location. At the end of our airport, you know, it just really doesn't make sense to any of us why this location was picked. So another thing, as Jamison mentioned, the air particulates, and I am, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not well-versed on the parts per million or any of that, that it will be releasing. However, I do know that it will be releasing and that is a concern. I don't know any other of these type facilities that are in an area that is so populated with the schools, with businesses, and with residents that are just a stone's throw away. And also the environmental impact on our roads. I know state-of-the-art, you know, I have no doubt that this is something better than the old-style rendering plants. Have no, there's no, I have no idea what you could do to make this not a bad deal though. With the amount of trucks coming in every day, I've personally seen a spill here in Etowah County years ago from one of these trucks that was headed to Hansville. The environmental impact of that, it shut down a major thoroughfare through Etowah County. And the number of trucks coming in and out every day, I just, as Jamison said, it's just mind-blowing to us the number of calls that we're getting about this and how this is just not the right type business. We want to be unified in Etowah County and I think what you hear and see outside is unity. And I certainly hope that you will consider the will of the people. And I appreciate your time very much. Thank you very much.
If you would, step up to the microphone, clearly restate your name in the office that you hold, and make sure you speak clearly into the microphone so a record of your testimony can be recorded.
Thank you. My name is Tim Ramsey, Etowah County Commissioner, District Four. I represent the people who are closest to this facility that is proposed. It's in my district. And really, I guess I would start off with just saying, I would like for you, and I understand this is an air permit, this is about the air, but you have to also see the people. I've been here all my life, I've never seen this much opposition to anything. I've never seen this many people unified in opposition to what they feel like is going to be a negative impact on their lives. But that being said, back to the air quality and what I believe in that regard is, we've always been told when we're talking, and I'm a firefighter here in this, in the city also, that there's a burn permit that you have to have and you can't burn from April to November and so that you, and the reason being for part of that is, we're in a bowl here in Etowah County and particularly in Gadsden. There's mountains all around us that kind of hold our air close. And so the particulate level in this exact area is higher than normal. And so I believe anything that we do or that happens in this area that puts out more of a particulate is going to be detrimental more in this area than it will be in other areas of the state or even other areas of the county and adjoining counties because of the mountains that completely surround Gadsden. So I would love for y'all to, and I understand that you're possibly looking at, this is how much they're going to put out and they're allowed to put this much out and it passes. But I hope that there's some leeway in that, some personal view of that that you can take into account also that says, there is a multitude of people opposed to this and they are, they are a special situation because of the mountains and because of not getting the air exchange that other areas might get. So please take that into consideration. Also into consideration, I would say, the adjoining businesses. There is Centos, which is within an eighth of a mile just across the runway, who does, of course, I don't know if y'all know Centos, but they do uniforms for industry. That has to have a negative effect on them. Adjacent to them is Intiva, do automobile parts. The particulate has to affect that. And then there's Jonathan McCormick, another business owner who is literally 100 yards from the proposed plant. He's on the runway. He does paint jobs for aircraft and high-end boats and some of the most beautiful work you've ever seen. He ships his stuff worldwide. He will be possibly having to move his facility because of the particulate getting in his paint or just being in the air and not being able to filter it out. All those are concerns that we have in our district. So I understand again that this may just be, okay, they can put out this much and they, they're going to be regulated and they're within guidelines, but please consider all the factors in this and take the time to look at the people's desire to have this put somewhere else. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to five minutes. We will continue the hearing until all persons who wish to speak have completed their oral comments. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember that this is not a question-and-answer session.
Hi, my name is Justin Overton and I'm the Executive Director and Staff Riverkeeper at Coosa Riverkeeper. Coosa Riverkeeper is a river conservation nonprofit with over 2,200 dues-paying members. Our mission is to protect, restore, and promote the Coosa River and its tributaries here in Alabama. I'm here today to voice concerns about the proposed Pilgrim's Pride Animal Rendering Facility here in Etowah County with permit numbers 3070051X001, 3070051X002. It's evident that this hearing tonight is a result of public outcry against the proposed rendering plant. And considering the ways this could impact air quality, water quality, and through biosolid application, I could not miss the opportunity to speak on behalf of the river, our members, and to protect public and environmental health in northeast Alabama. A.D.M.'s draft technical analysis of the proposed construction permit asserts that if the system is operated as intended, the facility should be in compliance with these limits. While we really hope that's the case, A.D.M.'s abbreviated technical analysis lacks the required details. It's but a collection of broad overarching statements. Thus, A.D.M.'s proposal to approve the construction permit is arbitrary and abuse of its authority under state and federal law because it does not provide a reason, a reasoned basis to support the proposal. In the past 12 months alone, J.B.S., Pilgrim's Pride's parent company, has violated Clean Air standards at four facilities in the U.S. A.D.M. clearly missed the mark in proposing to approve this permit to meet Clean Air Act requirements to protect public health and the environment. Given J.B.S. and its subsidiaries' track record of ongoing and flagrant compliance abuses, even if A.D.M. were to conduct the required analysis, develop a proposed construction permit that meets the requirements of the EPA-approved state implementation plan, and repropose a permit that provides public notice and comment, we have absolutely no confidence that this public, this company would be an asset to the community. We are deeply concerned that A.D.M.'s analysis and thus its proposed construction permit neither considers all the emission sources at the proposed plant nor all the air pollutants that are regulated by the Alabama State Implementation Plan and Federal Clean Air Act. A.D.M. as the permitting agency is authorized by the EPA to implement these programs that apply to the proposed plant and is responsible for the requirements that EPA entrusted it with. If a permit applicant does not submit all the information necessary for A.D.M. to do its job, then it must request the necessary information from the applicant. Based on the information available to the public for this proposed permit, A.D.M. is doing but a small part of what it's required to do. For example, A.D.M.'s permit doesn't include the wastewater treatment plant, which is a part of the operation planned at this facility and has emissions of Clean Air Act pollutants. A.D.M.'s analysis does not consider emissions from the diesel truck engines at the Pilgrim's Pride plant used to transport materials to and from the plant. Additionally, A.D.M. has not shared emission information that it's required to disclose. The information missing from the A.D.M. proposal that we've highlighted tonight and others we will document in our full technical comment letter are required under the Clean Air Act and critical to the public's understanding and review of the proposed permit approval. Other U.S. permitting agencies have and are conducting extensive air quality monitoring of fugitive admissions from similar meat processing.
I'm now just a little bit.
Sure. I have a lot to say in five minutes. I'd be happy to hand this to you also. Fugitive emissions that are results of serious public health concern. While traditionally emissions from these plants have been characterized and discounted as odors, the monitoring results show that hazardous air pollutants, including those regulated by the Clean Air Act, are released. Thus, it's no wonder that people that live and work in the vicinity of these plants now understand why they experience such significant health impacts. The health impacts include sleep disturbances, loss of appetite, headaches, cough, vomiting, and concentration issues. A.D.M. explains that the proposed plant is classified as a major source of volatile organic compounds or VOCs. But A.D.M.'s proposed permit contains neither the analysis nor the permit terms that are necessary to allow the plant to escape the major source classification. Breathing VOCs can irritate your eyes, nose, and throat and can cause difficulty breathing, nausea, and can damage the central nervous system as well as other organs. Some VOCs can cause cancer and fetal development issues. Since A.D.M.'s proposal does not include all the sources with emissions and does not include a complete emission inventory, the public cannot verify that VOC is the only pollutant for which the source is considered major. A.D.M.'s proposal contains no analysis and disclosure to the public of the hazardous air pollutants that this proposed plant has the potential to emit. And all of these health impacts are in addition to interruptions to normally daily activities and the loss in quality of life. This plant would also emit nitrogen dioxide under the proposed permit, which can also contribute to nutrient pollution. Is it possible your permit isn't protective of Neely Henry Lake public health and could impact the quality of life in the area? In sum, even if the plant were to install, and we understand the company offers its state-of-the-art, A.D.M.'s proposal covered here tonight fails to include the reasoned basis explaining how the plant will meet those requirements and the permit itself lacks the terms and conditions necessary to ensure A.D.M. and the public have the equipment constructed and operated in accordance with those assumptions. I am still not done, but thank you for your time.
Like I said, you can submit your full.
I plan on it. It'll be a lot longer. Thank you. I'm sorry I rushed.
Do you need a copy? That would be great.
Yeah. Um, is it possible that I could email it? This is my, well, no, I think I have other copies. This is my, well, no, I think I have other copies. Okay, no, I'll give you this one. And again, I'm sorry, I had a lot to say and I was trying not to breathe.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Virginia Calhoun and I live at 3936 Steel Station Road, right next to the property that the plant is proposed to build there. We have lived there for 50 years and I'm a widow now. My husband just passed away and so I have no means of buying any other property. But I would appreciate it if y'all would not put this in my yard. It'd be basically right next to my property line. And I'm disabled, I have a lot of health problems, and I could not stand to breathe that mess all day long right in my house. But I beg of y'all, please, if you consider the people around our area, there's several houses in our area. And we loved, lived in there. We lived in the city for 12, 13 years and then we found this place out in the country that we loved. It had plenty of space for our children to grow and enjoy being outside. But I beg of you, please consider my wishes. Thank you very much.
That's just mom, ain't worth nothing. Uh, I'm Greg Calhoun. I live at the same address, that's my mother speaking. And she spoke a lot on my behalf also. Oh, yes, I've worked in the Atlantic George past 21 years. I've been in and out chicken plants, rendering plants, and they do smell ferocious. Having this in my backyard, smelling it every day, no. And plus, what I've seen mostly, it brings, you see a large gopher rats around. You know, they come after all that and buzzards, which I'd, they'd be dealing with the airport a lot too, with them big birds flying around. Bring them around a lot more than they are now. So we got the smell to deal with. Uh, we gonna have a lot more traffic coming on the road. Uh, you know, the road ain't made for that and it's just gonna make our getting in and out dangerous. Cause already people fly down that road at astronomical speeds anyway. Uh, these big trucks, they say roughly 50 trucks a day. Uh, our roads can't handle that. Our neighborhood can't handle that. You know, I was raised out this place all my life. It's just been this little country town, country neighborhood and everybody got along. Uh, with all that's been said though, with a diverse crowd that's gonna be hired up there, and I've seen this on multiple occasions. They come into little quiet towns like this and the crime rate goes on a rise. Uh, might not be so much the employees, his employees, friends, family, whatever. They come down, they say, okay, they see nice cars or motorcycles in the yard or a nice house and they will do a home invasion robbery. You might not agree with me, but I've seen it happen more times than one. Uh, you know, those are my concerns mainly. And I say, I ask you not to build this. And another is our property value. It will go down tremendously. I don't care what anybody says, I've seen that happen also. You know, the place, you know, my father fought, you know, blood, sweat, and tears to defend this place. Thought to keep it. I said, we've been there nearly 50 years. We ain't got time to move it and plus we've been there so long, I wouldn't want to move this place. I mean, you gotta think, we run a business out of this house. It's an enormous amount of stuff we have back there. Uh, the way the scrap barn is, we couldn't even afford to sell it. And this is my life. I don't know what else to say except I beg of you not to build this. Uh, I don't want this to get hostile by no means and I'm not giving no threats. I just, I want y'all not to build it. Uh, I'm down to a minute and a half and I basically said everything I've got to say. Thank y'all, you have a pleasant day and please again, don't build this place.
Peggy Wood, please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name, oh, excuse me.
Sorry. Couple more sentences, you probably heard the spill, but. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded and also remember this is not a question and answer session. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Kristi Knowles. I am an attorney at Knowles and Sullivan LLC in Gadsden, Alabama, and I am here representing Choice Fabricators, Inc., whose operations are located across the street from the proposed rendering plant that would be located on Steel Station Road. The Pilgrim's Pride application for permit is due to be denied because it fails to address all the odors and air contaminants the operations will emit. The rendering plant would transport into our community 1.2 billion pounds of decaying raw meat and blood per year via 100 unenclosed trucks each day. Moreover, there will be a significant odor and air contamination caused by the loading, unloading, storing, transporting, and finishing, the finishing renderings being transported back out in unenclosed trucks. Pilgrim's Pride does not include any analysis or proposal for treatment of these obviously odor-causing and air-contaminated activities in its permit application. Alabama Admin Code 335-3-1.02 defines an air contaminant as including "any odor from whatever source." Moreover, Alabama Admin Code 335-3-14.01 and .03 state that ADEM must consider all sources of air contamination before granting a permit. Specifically, Section 03 states that the director shall deny a permit if the applicant does not show that every part of its operations, which may cause the issuance of contamination, will operate without emitting such air contaminants in violation of the rules and regulations. Pilgrim's Pride Air Permit Application is due to be denied because it fails to address these obvious odors. Even, even an owner of Valley Protein, J.J. Smith, admitted that these odors and air contaminants are part and parcel of rendering operations. In an article in the, the Washington Post, which is in the packet I provided you, Smith, who is the owner of the third-largest rendering company in the United States, admits that rendering plants cause foul odors and truck traffic, and it makes it difficult to get government approvals needed to operate because of that. Smith is quoted in that article as saying, quote, "Do you know anyone who wants, wants a rendering plant near their home? I will give you $5 million and five years to see if you can build one within eight miles of your house. I don't think you, you, you can." Again, this is the owner of the third-largest rendering company nationwide, acknowledging that air contaminants and odors are caused by trucks bringing decaying meat and that governmental approvals must include these odors. The Pilgrim's Pride application completely ignores these odors and air contaminants and is therefore due to be denied. Moreover, the Pilgrim's Pride application for permit is due to be denied because of Pilgrim's history of non-compliance. Pilgrim admits that even the smokestack emissions for which the permit does seek to be approved would violate emission standards, but only does not do so because of the scrubbers that cleaned the air before they would discharge that. It is therefore axiomatic that if the system is not operated as intended, the facility will not comply with the Clean Air laws. Because the proper and appropriate operation of the system is required for the facility or it will pollute the air of thousands who live, work, and attend church nearby, Pilgrim's compliance with Clean Air laws must be critical to ADEM's determination on whether to issue a, a, a permit. Pilgrim's Pride is owned by JBS. JBS owns animal processing and rendering operations throughout the United States and the world. So long as, it, it, so it has a long and significant history of non-compliance and environmental law, non, non-compliance, and that is a public record. According to the Violation Tracker Summary Report for JBS, since the year 2000, there have been a total of 44 incidences of environmental-related offenses totaling $5.3 million worth of fines. Just in the past 12 months alone, facilities owned by JBS have environ, have, have, four of the facilities owned by JBS have violated Clean Air laws. These violations show a repeated and systemic failure to comply with the air contaminant laws. According to the EPA, volatile organic compounds can cause damage to the livers, to the liver, kidneys, and heart. Moreover, odors have been considered potential health risks and cause nausea and headache. This proposed rendering plant is less than two miles from thousands of houses and schoolchildren as well as, as a church. With the lacking compliance record Pilgrim's has, the extent of the danger of non-compliance is too great for this permit. The Pilgrim's Pride application does not satisfy the law by failing to account for all the contaminants it will emit. I've got one more sentence. Moreover, the fact, uh, the facts do not support the conclusion that Pilgrim's will operate in compliance with the law. Therefore, the permit is due to be denied. Thank you very much.
You can leave this way.
Can I get my briefcase?
Oh, yeah.
Please. Go ahead and step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Make sure you speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember this is not a question and answer session.
Well, thank you. My name is Phil Williams. Uh, I kind of come at this with multiple vantage points. So first of all, I'm a local attorney. I represent a number of clients who have what is legally referred to as aggrieved status in an ongoing litigation right now about the rendering plant site that we're talking about tonight. Uh, that litigation is currently underway, even today, was just removed to federal court. Uh, I'm also the immediate past state senator. Uh, I've spent eight years serving this district as the state senator and had some great interactions with ADEM actually. Very helpful to me with PCBs in Weiss Lake and other things that I had to deal with as a state senator. Uh, that being said, as a state senator, I was also very involved and responsible for meeting with local, state, and federal officials to help get the National Guard, their installation upgraded out there at that site to the extent that it is now a major National Guard site with, I want to say 40 full-timers and high-paying jobs that are located at the airport adjacent to the site we're talking about. On top of that, I'm also a retired veteran. I got 30 years of service, retired as a colonel. The unit that is at the airport is my old unit. Uh, I was a paratrooper, that is a drop zone. It is one of the only certified drop zones in the state of Alabama. Uh, to be a certified military drop zone, there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through. No pun intended. But the reality is, uh, being a certified drop zone is unique to Gadsden. And it's also, in an emotional sense, it's also a drop zone that is named for a friend of mine who was killed in Afghanistan, Chip Ramsey. That's Ramsey Drop Zone. Uh, the rendering plant that we're talking about, in my opinion, could very likely shut down that drop zone and cease a lot of the training that we see out there. On top of that though, I'll just tell you, um, my family, we've lived here for 30 years. And my kid's school, where my wife worked for 15 years, is within a stone's throw of the rendering plant site. My church, Church of the Highlands, is opening its new facility just about a half-mile behind the site. Friends, clients, all of them, live all around it. I cannot imagine for a minute why that is the right site for this plant. I look at it and think, okay, could a rendering site be somewhere in Edwah County? Maybe. But they picked one of the most geographically uncomfortable positions they could have possibly selected. So I am working with Kristi Knowles, the lady who was here before. She is one of the other attorneys involved in the litigation I told you about. But let me go a different track. Uh, she gave you some of the legal standards for which we're, we're relying upon for that particular case. I want to come at you from a different angle just for a minute. The foundational statutes that created ADEM are in the documents that are the packets that I left for you. But codified in Title 22 of the state code is the creation of the Alabama Environmental Management Act that created ADEM as an organization. And it doesn't just say that ADEM is there to look at standards and regulatory authority and to consider air quality and that kind of thing. It literally has language that I thought was significant for tonight. And so I guess if I could just have leave for a minute to go ahead and say some things that are probably already in your mind, but I feel like they need to be said for the record, is that ADEM is not there as an institution to purely do the black and white. ADEM is there, and the statute clearly says, to protect the health and welfare of the citizens of the state. And it goes on to say, "in order to," quote, "thereby assure for all citizens of the state a safe, healthful, and productive environment." And then lastly, it says, "and in doing so, to ensure that government is responsive to the needs of the people and sufficiently flexible to meet changing conditions." And then it goes on to say that there are certain definitions that have to be considered within that code. And it refers to the issue of air pollutants. In a different section of the code, it says, "anything defined in Section 28 of Title 22, those are adopted for the Environmental Management Act." And it literally says that ADEM is charged with providing an environment that would not interfere with the enjoyment of life or property. And y'all, that's what I'm here about tonight. The legal authority, I think Kristi cited it more than adequately. You've heard from citizens who are concerned. I'm here to tell you, as someone who helped write statutes for the state of Alabama as a state senator, as somebody who lives in the district, as somebody who has clients that are aggrieved, and as somebody who worked that area on the airport and jumped on that site many, many times, I can just tell you that there is no way in the world that quality of life can be maintained if that plant goes up on that site. And that sounds like a broad-reaching statement, but I would not make it if I didn't believe it. I'm a firm believer, as a member of the bar, as a former elected official, that when you say it on the record, you better know what you're saying. And the reality is, everything Kristi cited is not just a fact-based, we're worried. It's real. And quality of life is going to be a serious issue and y'all are charged. Y'all are charged with quality of life. You are charged with ensuring that people have a right to the use of enjoyment and the life on their property. So anyway, that is my plea. I am hopeful that y'all will consider the comments you've heard tonight to include the actual charge and the legislative intent in creating ADEM and that you'll deny the permit. Thank you very much.
Go ahead and step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Okay.
Please clearly speak into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. And also remember, this is not a question and answer session.
So you won't answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll present my questions in the form of an answer. It's like Jeopardy, I guess. Ready? My name's Lance Corey. I'm representing the people that are opposed to this. My background is aviation airport. I'm retired military pilot that worked full-time with the National Guard. I'm, um, retired military pilot that worked, uh, full-time with the National Guard for 20-plus years. I'm NTSB-trained accident investigator. I'm a FAA-trained accident investigator. I'm National Guard-trained national, um, accident investigator, and I commanded the, uh, the aviation support, safety support center down at Fort Rucker for four years prior to my retirement. So I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of a, um, person who has a extensive, uh, aviation background. First thing, uh, I was going to ask this in the form of a question, but, um, what I wanted to know is that, um, is it normal practice for ADEM to issue a, a, uh, hearing or have a hearing or issue permits prior to the land being sold? I know you're not going to be able to answer that or won't, uh, won't answer, but I'd like to go on record asking that question. Uh, the reason I'm asking that is that, uh, I assume that you're doing this based on the assumption that the land is sold, it will be sold, and I wanted to present that. I, I know time's limited, your scope's limited, but I wanted to present packets that shows, first of all, the law that's covered under the Airport Authority's establishment, and many people don't understand it, but how it affects, um, the sales of that property. Because that property is technically owned by the Airport Authority. They have the authority to sell the land, but they have to have a official vote on it, and it has to be recorded, and it has to be documented. And I'm presenting you the law and the, um, the minutes showing that this hasn't been discussed. So if you're under the assumption that this is going to be, this property has been sold, you're either being misled or the public's being lied to. Uh, that, we don't know that at this point. Uh, also, I wanted to make sure that, um, that if you, um, ADEM has to get this approved or the land sale has to be approved by the FAA. They're the final authority on this, and I don't, I understand why you're going through this effort until the FAA's actually been involved in, in, um, supporting either a study of this, how it affects their operations, and that, that, that's the two areas that I was, um, wanting to cover. Um, I know, again, this is a limited scope, um, that you are going to decide upon, and it seems like you've already made your decisions on many of this, but, uh, my research shows that there's not another rendering plant near an airport in this state. And, uh, I've, I've looked, I've done the research. It doesn't make sense to even put a rendering plant near the airport because of how it affects the safety and operation of that airport. And I'm using, um, a advisory circular from the FAA. They don't have the regulatory authority to say that you can't put it there, but they have a, a advisory circular that states that is, um, that they, um, advise against putting any of these facilities near an airport's operation. And in this case, they will have final say on, uh, if this, uh, airport, uh, property will be sold. Um, I have the, um, the regulation, and it, it, it talks about zones that are part of it, and that if it's within these zones, they recommend that they, these establishments are not put in there. And I have copies of that, and you can read that for yourselves. I highlighted that. Um, I do need to point out, and I don't know if ADEM has been advised of this, but they said that, um, check my notes, that the, um, they're not, ADEM, uh, the FAA is not a, a permitting agency, but, and they understand that that should be pushed upon local, uh, authority to decide on permitting. But since there's, there's federal funds involved, that they should have a final say. And the question I ask you is, I know you won't be able to answer, but I want to go on record. They state in this regulation, in this circular, that the ADEM should, or ADEM or any authority like them should be advised by the FAA if this is an establishment that needs to be located at the airport. I know my time's running short on this, but again, I've got two packets that explain much better than, than I could in a short time, and if you could please read over it, and it might save you some time, uh, making the decision, because again, the FAA is the final say on it. So thank you for your time.
You can leave this way.
Can I hand this to you?
Yeah, you can put those up here. When you get up to the microphone, please clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Okay.
Make sure you speak clearly into the microphone so that we can get an accurate, uh, recording. And also remember, this is not question and answer.
Okay, my name is Julie Lay. Julie Lay, J-U-L-I-E-L-A-Y. And I'm here on behalf of myself. Uh, my name is Julie Lay, and I live in Marshall County. I currently live 40 miles from the Hansville, Alabama River Valley Ingredients Rendering Facility. Yet my family and community have been impacted by the land application of what Pilgrim's Pride describes as fertilizer. This fertilizer is the wastewater sludge for poultry-processing facilities, municipalities potentially, and rendering facilities. This rendering facility plans to spread thousands of gallons of sludge on Alabama lands, which is a cost-effective yet irresponsible way to dispose of their waste. The Hansville facility alone is responsible for the generation of 190,000 wet tons of sludge on Alabama land in 2019. 2020 numbers were not available at the time that I asked for the information from ADEM. Roughly 8,000 truckloads of sludge. Pilgrim's has yet to answer any questions regarding their sludge production or how they plan to control the odor and potential contamination in their sludge. In fact, the group Growing Gadsden ignored my questions and later blocked me from asking questions, which were as respectful as possible. I'm here to oppose the building of this facility, as it will negatively impact Gadsden, as well as many surrounding counties. ADEM's mission is to assure all citizens of the state a safe, healthful, and productive environment. The approval of these permits are against ADEM's mission statement, and therefore the permit should not be allowed. Point one is historical and current beneficial use byproducts for land application regulation gaps. Rendering facilities are one source of sludge that the state of Alabama ADEM considers a beneficial use byproduct, which is, has a noxious odor, potential contamination that is spread across land in Alabama. ADEM does not require that geological studies of land be completed to investigate how groundwater may be impacted by the application of poultry wastewater sludge on land. The potential contamination of thousands of acres of Alabama farmland and our drinking water does not equal a productive environment. No contamination testing of poultry wastewater sludge is required by ADEM. There are no air quality or VOC standards for the thousands of gallons of sludge. This sludge, again, is extremely noxious. There is a massive gap in regulation and does not assure a safe environment. Biosecurity risks for the wildfowl and other wildlife that graze land application sites are overlooked. No government involvement from FDA or USDA to ensure the crops that are grown and the cattle that are grazed on the land that have been applied to adhere to the crop harvesting and cattle grazing withdrawal times. ADEM's response to why it took them 15 days to inspect a site was, quote, "due to limited funding, we do not have the staff to inspect every site, but the questions arise, we will investigate the site to ensure regulations are being followed," end quote. ADEM simply does not have the funds to inspect sites within a timely manner, therefore allowing time for this, for site sludge to run off or seep into the ground and odors to lessen. These are massive gaps that must be corrected. The points above show that River Valley Ingredients has knowingly used these loopholes in regulation to their benefit for years and knows the char, and shows their character and also shows the character of Pilgrim's Pride wanting to use these same loopholes and negate their good neighbor claim. Point two is historical and current inability of ADEM to hold River Valley Ingredients accountable for repeated citizen odor complaints and therefore cannot hold Pilgrim's Pride accountable. ADEM has not held River Valley Ingredients accountable for the 108 odor complaints that accounted from 2019 to 2020. The comments from ADEM on an early 2019 complaint and a late 2020 complaint were the same corrective action. After a year and a half, the same corrective action is being given to citizens that live near the plant. I asked Ms. Kelly on two occasions, what is ADEM's comments regarding these complaints, continually to pile up with no action, only words from River Valley Ingredients, but received no response. This is against ADEM's mission to a healthful environment, as people that live in the surrounding area cannot enjoy their environment and be outside their homes for fear of breathing in noxious odors. In closing, I feel strongly that this facility should not be allowed in Gadsden or anywhere in the state. The only time it should be reconsidered is when the current rendering facility is repaired and has significant period of time of no complaints or violations. It also should not be reconsidered until a more sustainable operation is engineered to ensure that the sludge produced is in fact safe for soil, water, and air. One of Pilgrim's consistent rebuttals to environment and health concerns are economics. They talk about the money the plant will bring in. Friends, I want to remind you of wise words. Gold and silver blind the eye. Temporary riches lie. Everyone has to account for the decisions that we make. At some point, the decisions will either haunt you or bring contentment that you did the best you could. What will be on your conscience? 8,000-plus people are begging you to please do not approve these permits. It is clear approving these permits will remove ADEM from their mission statement. Thank you.
I have supplemental information in the stage that I have. Thanks. When you step up to the microphone, if you would clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you speak clearly into the microphone so we can ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded.
Yes, ma'am.
And keep in mind, this is not a question and answer session.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'd like to thank y'all for letting me speak. My name is Trent Thrasher. I own a business in, in Rainbow City. It's, my address is 3053 Still Station Road, which will be across from this location where the site is, which is also across from the airport. I don't know if any of y'all are affiliated where the airport is. So my, my office is in Rainbow City. So we employ around 100 people, uh, with construction, so we're in the building business. Um, and to this date, with us being building there, we have lost two people that were coming to Rainbow City and to the airport to develop. So not have we only lost the revenue of those buildings and people coming, we have also lost jobs. We've also lost opportunities for people to come for good jobs. You know, as Pilgrim's Pride, the jobs there are not really good jobs. And as far as Etowah County as a whole, we have 35, 3,500 jobs available right now in a 30-mile radius. So the jobs are really not needed for this. Also, if you look at Pilgrim's Pride's background as far as the trucks, I think I sent my mom the other day to Hansville, as this lady spoke while ago, is sludge, trucks, open trucks, spillage on the road. It rained yesterday. The smell, I, as far as we clocked yesterday, from the Pilgrim's Pride, I mean, from the rendering plant in Hansville, it was seven miles to the first house, which as she got out and is exposed, it was, it still had a smell. So as far as us as a, as a company, growth, our airport is also a big issue. Our airport, if this land is developed for, for a rendering plant, it will stop the growth of airport, and that's what we need. We need to develop our airport. It has not been developed. I have built seven projects at the Gadsden Airport, and it's over a 22-year period. And so we would love to see this grow. We would love to bring in other stuff. So if this land is sowed, the airport can't grow. Our airport can't grow, so that will mean that we will lose a lot of other businesses coming, because if, if they have their private planes or, or stuff to come, we will lose that business. Also, as a owner, I live in Southside, and I live on the river. I enjoy our river every, every day. Matter of fact, today, my wife sent me a text, skip work and let's get on the boat, because it was that nice. I don't want to lose that. I don't want to lose my family's fun, time, and also my work environment. Um, as, as speaking from just business owner, me and my wife own three businesses there that I have spoke about, I just wanted to, I want our community to grow. And I think you have seen that, coming here today, as many people that we started out with, 8,500 people, that want to do better. We have come together, our neighbors have put everything aside, and all joined together. So I'd like for y'all to think about that as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
You can leave this way, sir.
Okay.
When you get up to the microphone, if you would clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent, um, make sure that you speak clearly into the microphone so we can ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. And then remember, this is not a question and answer session.
I appreciate what you're doing.
I'm starting.
There you go. Now you can go. Thank you. I'm Cindy Greer, and I'm the administrator of Westbrook Christian School. Didn't know I was going to speak tonight till I was asked to do that. That's why I'm actually dressed not appropriate for this, uh, hearing. But I did want to, I was blessed to be able to, to speak to you tonight. I know that everything I've read is this, this hearing is about technicalities regarding our air. And what I want to do to you tonight, I'm the last one, I know you're happy to hear that, uh, I want to personalize some technicalities for you, um, because I represent the future of our community, and that's our children. Uh, there are 600 children in our school, and we are 1.42 miles away from this proposed site. Um, and I have to tell you, these things have changed the way our children get to have life right now. Um, they wear them all day. We're fortunate to be in schools, to have in-person learning, but the one place they get to be normal, and that's outside, because they can take this off. They can run, they can play, they can, they can be normal children, whatever normal is right now. And what this plant will do is take away our air, take away our normal. If there is a smell, we're going to smell it. If there is the particles in the air that our doctors have told us will affect our asthmatic children, they're going to breathe that, um, and it's going to affect their day-to-day life. And what I just, and not only do I represent 600 children within 1.42 miles, just about half a mile down the road, there are an additional 1,400 children at two other schools. And if you go to a five-mile radius, there are actually 6,000 children. So I'm just asking you on behalf of our children, who represent our future, the future of our community, who like to breathe clean air, I thank you for what you do to provide a management for our environment. I appreciate that. I have nine grandchildren who I would love to be able to breathe clean air, so I just ask you to consider that when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there are no more registered speakers, please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM on February 2nd, 2021. All comments must be received at the office of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determination regarding the proposed permit and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned.